This conference will now be recorded.
Councilmember, excuse me, Planning Commissioner Elko Sherry?
Present.
Planning Commissioner Smith? Planning Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Nutbrock?
I'm here.
Planning Commissioner Keeler?
Here.
All right, so we are good. Before we go into approval of the minutes, I just wanted to say a couple of things really quick. The city's made some investments in having this hybrid setup, and so I didn't want folks that are bound by schedule or commute or something to feel that attending virtually was like lesser than coming in person. I just like coming in person, so please don't feel that you have to be here in person. And that's going mainly to commissioners. That's the first thing. And in the second thing, just a bit of housekeeping, this month I've got the go-to meeting in front of me. And so for any of the commissioners that would like to speak, if you unmute, I'll most likely catch it if we're not like in the heat of a debate or something like that. So just a couple of housekeeping things. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the April 19th meeting minutes, which are up on the screen.
I move that we accept the April 19th meeting minutes as written.
If I can get a second from anyone there?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dennis. If there are... Okay, if there are no objections, we'll just use the unanimous consent. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and approve the meeting minutes. Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. Thank you, everyone. And I'd like to open it up for a public comment. I believe we do have one that was submitted. It was a little bit lengthy, so we'll just enter that into the meeting minutes for folks to read afterwards. And we won't be reading it out loud. And so I'd like to open up public comment to anyone in person. Anyone? Going once, going twice? No, I'm kidding. I won't do that to you. Okay, anyone on the phone or the go-to meeting that would like to make a public comment? You just state your name and your address, I think is what we need. Any public comments at all? I just want to be fair to folks joining us remotely. Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And we'll roll right into unfinished business with the parking code update. Ethan, I'll hand it off to you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So tonight, I thought I would try something just a little bit different, which is I'll go ahead and give the staff report start to finish. And then we can open it up for questions, just in the interest of time and keeping things as efficient as possible. So, which also means I probably won't touch on every single item in the staff report. Just mainly the main things, items for discussion that we can talk about after the staff report is finished. So the first thing I wanted to address is the issue of joint parking, joint parking and shared parking. And so you might remember that last month, there was a discussion about moving the joint parking section of the code underneath the shared section, shared parking section of the code. And staff took another look at that and decided that that is not the right place to put that as a subsection to shared parking. And the reason is that even though it might not seem like it, joint parking and shared parking are two different things. So in a shared parking situation, you have two uses that share a parking area. And the parking requirements of those, of each of those uses has to be met. In a joint parking situation, you have two uses which are sharing parking. But the parking needs of those two uses, of each of those two uses combined, don't have to be met. Because you have two uses that don't share the same hours of operation. For instance, like maybe an office in a bowling alley that mainly, that have two different peak periods. One that has a peak period at night and one that has a peak period during the day. So you don't need enough parking to serve each use. So those are two different situations. So for that reason, we did not move the joint parking code as to be a subsection of the shared parking code. And then you might remember, there was also a discussion about work-related trucks being able to park in off-street parking areas. As well as the weight of the trucks and the code references or current code references a gross weight limit of two tons as being sort of the threshold between a truck that you can park in an off-street area and one that you can't. And so we are now allowing, the code, the draft code is now allowing for one work-related truck to be parked in an off-street parking area. And we got rid of the reference to weight. So instead of talking about the two tons, it now talks about just light trucks. And that was consistent with what we talked about last month as well. And then there was a discussion about parking in driveways. You might remember specifically for motorhomes, boats, trailers, those types of things. And the conclusion of that discussion was that the city should allow those types of vehicles to be parked in driveways, but only for two weeks a year. And so the draft code now reflects that. And then if you go beyond two weeks a year, it can't be parked in front of the front facade of the dwelling unit. There was also a discussion about landscaping percentages. And so there were these graphics, which I'm going to ask Jess to scroll to, which are, I think, Attachment B of this packet. So they're kind of near the back of this particular item. I'll give you a second to get there and I can help you find it.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's, you'll probably want to skip ahead quite a bit. It's like page 40 or something. Yeah, there we go. So you remember, we had these graphics where we pulled some examples of different types of uses and parking lots that go with them. And we were trying to sort of zero in on how we should handle landscaping. Just as a reminder, the existing code requires perimeter landscaping between five and 10 feet wide around parking lots. And it also requires interior landscaping of islands, one every seven spaces. So those are kind of the basic provisions of the existing code. And based upon discussions in not only last month, but prior months, we changed the landscaping island requirement to be one every 12 spaces. And that's a little bit more consistent with what you see in other jurisdictions. Most jurisdictions use one every, say, 15 or 20. So one every 12 is still quite a bit. And then the discussion last month was, well, how much internal landscaping within these parking lots? Interior landscaping should we have in these parking lots? And so we calculated the landscaping inside of these parking lots. And that ranges from 23 to 33%. That also includes the landscaping buffers around the perimeter of the parking lots. So that's just total landscaping associated with the parking lot. And what we also did was we took a look at the landscaping codes, parking lot landscaping codes of other jurisdictions. And what we found there was that generally speaking, there's a range of between 10 and 15%, which is kind of what our intuition was last month as a requirement for the interior landscaping in the parking lots. Now, the one thing that we should point out really quickly on that is just that most jurisdictions define that as interior landscaping. So it excludes the perimeter landscaping. So they require, say, 10% inside the parking lot. And then there's landscaping buffers around the parking lot as well. So based upon that analysis, even though the examples, the example pictures, graphics show between 23 and 33%, that includes the buffers on the outside, we'd be recommending somewhere in that 10 to 15% range. And that would be specified as excluding the buffers and excluding drive aisles. So basically, the parking itself only. And then the last issue that I wanted to highlight just a little bit is a new issue that we haven't talked about much so far, which is the minimum number of parking spaces required for each use. And so WSP ordered the ITE Parking Generation Manual. That's the Institute for Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. And they're kind of the gold standard in terms of going out, surveying different uses every year and seeing how many cars are parked in those different uses during different hours of the day. They don't resurvey every use type every year, but every couple of years, they get back to different, surveying all of the uses. So we took a look at that, and that's kind of an on-the-ground, you know, boots-on-the-ground check, so to speak, of what's kind of going on out in the real world, in terms of number of parking spaces that different uses actually... Number of cars that are parked at different uses is probably a better way to state it. And so we've provided a table for you in the staff report that goes on for a couple of pages near the back of the staff report that reports out on what the ITE Parking Generation Manual findings are for each of those different types of uses. And so there's quite a few different types of uses that you'll see there. That's only a subset of the entire Parking Generation Manual. We pulled the uses that we thought would be most useful to La Center. And then we also provided a column showing you what your existing requirement is in the code. And so if that, if there's blank rows in that column, it's because there is no existing requirement in La Center's code for that particular type of a use. For instance, La Center's code aggregates industrial uses into one parking category. And so it doesn't have a lot of the subcategories that the Parking Generation Manual does. So, you know, a lot of those, a lot of the uses have parking numbers that are lower than what La Center is requiring right now. Some have higher numbers of cars than what La Center is requiring, and some are kind of in the middle somewhere, you know, being pretty close to what, you know, the two documents, the code and the manual, sort of agreeing with each other. But one thing I wanted to point out, because I think it's a question that's going to come up, is for single-family residential uses, the ITE manual doesn't include that, and they have not surveyed those since 1980. So, you know, it doesn't include that. But I think that that's one, you know, based upon our local circumstances and understanding of single-family uses, we can come up with a pretty good number ourselves for that one. And then for multifamily, the Parking Generation Manual recommends ratios which are significantly lower than what the code requires. Our code requires three spaces per multifamily unit, which is two spaces plus a guest space. And the Parking Generation Manual has a, depending upon the type of multifamily that you're talking about, has a ratio of 0.5 to 1.12 spaces per unit. So that's less than half, you know, a quarter or even a sixth of the requirement, if you're talking about .5 spaces per unit that the code requires. Okay, so I think that's it in terms of the staff report. I'll open it up for questions. And I think Chair Elko Sherry may have a little bit of preamble about the questions and format for those.
Yeah, thank you, Ethan. I was thinking for this part, I know last time we got pretty deep into the weeds on this, which is fine, but it won't maybe let us get as much business done as we'd like. So if we feel that tonight, we really want to dig into, and there's some important things in here, you know, going from like .58 per dwelling unit on multifamily housing to, you know, down from two to three per unit. That could be a big discussion. So if we see it getting in-depth, we should probably set up like a work group with, you know, a couple of the folks that have studied this issue and really dig down and then maybe come back to the rest of the planning commissioners with some recommendations. So let's see how it goes. But if it goes a little too deep, let's go ahead and like pause and then kick that to a working session, if that works for everyone here.
I was going to recommend the same thing, especially with regard to the number of parking spaces required. Because, I mean, there's just, there's a fair amount of work there to go through that table and look at what we think should be La Center's proposed requirement, which probably doesn't lend itself to the meeting very well, but we can kind of see how the discussion goes.
Yeah. And I think based on the size of our town and things like that, we could probably use those guidelines. But there's always those little anomalies where the ratio just doesn't work for us. So that, in a working session, we could really flush that out. Any comments from commissioners on remote? And if you unmute, I'll be able to see that. Commissioner Nutbrock, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, a couple of comments on the parking. I guess a question. Does, Ethan, does the manual... I assume by your comments, the manual doesn't differentiate between customer parking and employee parking? They're just looking at the total number of cars in a parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. And it's usually number of spaces per thousand square feet, but in the case of residential, it's per unit.
Yeah. You know, because you didn't, in some places in the, our code column, you didn't... You know, our code in some places has differentiated between customer parking and then employee parking.
Yeah.
So that's something we need to, we'll need to consider. The other thing is... Hang on, let me look at my notes here. You know, I'm a little suspicious about the low numbers for multifamily housing. As I look at those numbers and thought about it, I suspect those are probably appropriate or reasonable numbers in a urban environment where you've got people that don't own cars because they walk to work or take other, or public transportation. And so I would make the argument that those numbers are way too low in an environment that we have in our city. So that'll be something we can talk about later.
Can I just jump in there and respond to that real quick?
Sure.
So the parking manual anticipated your question, Dennis, because we didn't pull this into the table, but there's multifamily categories that are, that have close proximity to transit. And we did not include that because basically, we don't consider that Center has very much transit in it, even though there is a connector line, a C-Train connector line that comes here a few times a day. So those numbers that you're seeing in the table are actually multifamily that is not close to transit.
Yeah, I still have a hard time accepting. All you gotta do is go around and look at some of the townhomes we have. You can count the cars and the number of townhomes, and it's significantly higher than those recommended numbers. And maybe that's something that a work group could do, is go around to some of our multifamily developments and do that survey, just to see what we've got.
Yeah, this is a very good point. Commissioner Nutbrock, what I was thinking is I'm keeping, and I'm sure Ethan is too, but I'm keeping a running list of the things you've mentioned, like so far I have employee versus resident parking and multi-dwelling unit parking may be too low. And then we can make that maybe the agenda of a working group with some additions from within, of course.
And then I'm, so we're not going to go through the red line then? Is that what I understand?
Not intentionally line by line, like we did last month, but
Okay.
certainly pull it up if there's specific items that we need to talk about.
Yeah, I wanted to go down to...
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hill, go ahead.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you. Dennis, I appreciate your...
Commissioner Hill, we are not getting your audio. If you can try that again. Commissioner Hill, we're still not getting your audio. I don't know if it's a reception item. We'll come back to you, though. Feel free to kind of break in if you need until we get that audio. But I do see you're unmuted, so it's something else. Commissioner Nutbrock, did you want to bring up that one point you had there?
Yeah, I'm down looking at the red lines on 18280, Ethan, where you moved the joint parking requirement up under the shared. I think that satisfies my issue, is I just didn't think that having those two separated in text made sense because they are somewhat related. But my question is, in the case, I mean, you made a distinction about shared versus joint parking. And I don't believe we have a definition for those. And if we don't, I'm suggesting that maybe on item three, which is the shared use, the more general case, that there ought to be something there that says, with the exception of shared use parking defined in paragraph four, this requirement applies. Because they seem to be, without having a clear definition of shared versus joint, they seem to be conflicting requirements.
Right, I agree. They are a little bit confusing, so a definition would help.
Yeah.
So defining shared.
Because without that definition, they, someone could interpret them as conflicting requirements. And then up under the landscaping, I want to make sure I understand what you're suggesting. Right now, in the red line, you've got paragraph C that says when parking area has less than 10, when a parking area has at least 10 spaces, the parking shall have a minimum of 10% of landscaping excluding perimeter landscaping screening. Okay, I agree, appreciate that. But the paragraph right below that says parking areas containing at least 12 spaces should contain landscaping islands equally distributed. So are is your intent to have both of those requirements in there?
It should probably be lined up better, so we could make them both 10 or both 12.
Well, I guess, so we're saying that you have to have, the way I'm interpreting what this says is you have to have a minimum of 10% of the parking area landscaped. And that landscaping must be contained in islands between parking spaces of at least 25 square feet. Is that where we're going with that?
Let us get to the specific section of the code. I think it'll help us all visualize this a little bit better.
It's three of five of that landscaping per section. For some reason, I don't have the PDF page on my app here.
Commissioner Nutbrock, what's the heading, what's the heading of the section you're at?
We have it on screen now, but it's...
Parking areas shall be landscaped as follows.
Yeah, 18245-060, item nine, and page of the packet is page 26 of the packet.
Ah, three of five. Okay, I see.
So what I see here is in C, you've got a requirement based upon 10%. And then in E, you sort of change back and say it's squared, you know, a specific square footage. And I can envision situations where those might conflict.
Well, so, I mean, one is a percentage requirement for the interior of the parking area, for parking areas that contain 10 or more parking spaces. And then the other just says that you have to have a landscaping island every 12 spots for parking lots that have 12 or more spaces. Obviously, you couldn't make that one for parking lots of 10 or more spaces, but... So I don't think that those necessarily conflict. It's possible that they're a little bit confusing. But you could use item D, the landscaping island requirement, you could use that to fulfill item C. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, that's certainly one interpretation. And so I think it needs to be more specific, or maybe combine those two in a single paragraph, so it's clear what we're doing, but...
Well, I think maybe one thing that could clear it up is if we make the landscaping island requirement a subsection of the percentage requirement. In other words, showing the reader that you can use your landscaping islands to fulfill your percentage requirement.
Well, but is there a reason we need both?
Well, one is a performance standard, which is kind of a backstop, if you will. And so I think that the discussion last month, the way that I remember it, is just that the planning commission and staff was recommending, and I think that the planning commission agreed, that having a percentage requirement would make some sense because for some of these smaller parking lots, you might not hit 10% of the area that's in landscaping. And so potentially, a developer or an applicant would have to add... Would have to add additional landscaping if they provide the landscape islands, but it still doesn't hit 10%. So it's a way of looking at the pictures that we talked about last month and trying to hit an overall amount of landscaping that we feel is appropriate for parking lots in La Center.
And let's also consider adding that to the list if, and I'd actually be happy to work with you on that, Commissioner Nutbrock, as part of that working group, unless someone else wants to step up. But we'll address that, you know, who, in a bit. But I took a note of just clarifying, or possibly making landscaping a subsection of the percentage requirement.
Okay. Because if you, if you do some calculations, you know, we require a 20, 180 square foot parking space. Take 10% of that... Take ten percent of that, you get eighteen, you know, ten of those is you know, you can do some calculations that show that they are, those requirements are very similar to each other. And I contend we don't need both, but we can, we could talk more about that in detail in a work session.
Excellent. Commissioner Nutbrock, did you have any other items on your list? Like relating to
Let me, let somebody else talk while I scroll down. I've made notes in my copy. Let me look and see if I have any.
Gotcha. Commissioner Hill, are you back on with audio?
I, Chairman, okay, sorry, I am now on my phone. It turns out that where we're located, the internet is just not working that well. So I'm listening in and looking and watching via the phone.
Perfect.
I'm caller number two.
All right, definitely, feel free to continue. I think we lost you last time, but we hear you loud and clear now. If you wanted to finish up your thought, if you still wanted to.
No, just real quick, again, I think the thing I was going to say regarding what Dennis Nutbrock had shared regarding the parking was I'm in favor that I think the numbers that come out of the manual are a little bit too low. My question really was to was what are the downsides? And leaving them, the numbers are similar to what we already have in place. Is there a downside to that regarding to our city? That's, that was my question.
Throw that at you, Ethan. Couple thoughts and Public Works Director Cast may have some other thoughts, but I don't personally think that the table is specific enough. It probably needs to have more land use categories in it to adequately sort of capture the range of uses that La Center sees. And then point number two is that, you know, it may be fine, it's a policy choice, it may be fine to leave some of those numbers as they are. Some of them, though, I think, you know, to use the example of multifamily that's been brought up
Yes.
are quite different. And so I guess the disadvantage of keeping that the way that it is is that it makes it harder for multifamily developers to provide housing in La Center, which has implications for affordable housing and other issues. So those type of, you know, that's just one example, but those type of issues sort of need to be considered as we as we sort of adjust parking numbers. And it may be that we take into consideration other policy considerations that the planning commission feels are are for some reason more important. But using that example, that would be sort of one of the disadvantages of sticking with the numbers that we have. And then just anecdotally, working with the codes of other jurisdictions, you know, three spaces per multifamily unit, even for single family units, that's an uncommon requirement. But three spaces per multifamily unit is like the most I've ever seen, I think. So it's pretty high.
Okay. I agree. One of the things that I think I brought out to our last meeting, I think this is possibly another opportunity for us to to, if we do in fact have a sidebar committee on this subject, is to maybe ask one of the developers that have worked in our community or intend to work and have them tend and talk about this and get the developers, because I think it's a good point, Ethan, that you're making, that this could be a difficult hurdle for developers. If they're trying to do something in our city and it looks like it's just they really can't work within those guidelines. I think we certainly need to be considerate of that and make sure we don't somehow lose a developer who really wants to come and develop something in our city. Enough said for me on that, but I appreciate your, what's going on. And I think the sidebar committee is a good idea. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hill. Appreciate it. Commissioner Nutbrock, Commissioner Keeler, any other thoughts on this?
I did have a question, but I think Ethan just answered it for me. On table two, the first column, the average parking rate, that's the ITE recommendation. And the following column is the center code.
Correct. Maybe we didn't make that very clear, but yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think part of that working group also, Ethan, you had mentioned it increases affordability. And as a person who has four children still living at home, all of driving age or higher, I think at this point they're planning on moving to Alaska or although it might be expensive there, I don't know. But I think to afford a home, they're going to move to Alaska. So it'd be interesting in that working group to have a, like a, maybe a mix of folks attending that. I think we can have up to two commissioners.
Without it being a
Without it, okay. Yeah, so we could have two commissioners and then Ethan. Director Cast is always welcome to, because his to-do list is quite short, I hear. Are we ready to move on to one dot seven B, which is something new that came up last time, which was the temporary use code update?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I have some of the comments, but we can, I can work those in a working group if I'm a member.
Yeah, and I'm definitely going to solicit maybe volunteers near the end if someone could remind me of that. Okay, great. Let's move on to temporary use code update memo, which is one dot seven B if you're following along. Ethan, let me hand it back over to you.
Okay, thank you again. So this is the second month that we've talked about temporary use code update. And just kind of giving you some high level reminder of what this is all about. It's essentially what we're trying to do here is make La Center's code a little bit more flexible for new businesses to come to La Center who might first establish themselves as temporary uses, get going, get their operation up and running, and then have the option of locating in La Center on a permanent basis. And startup costs for businesses are obviously one of the major factors in success or failure of businesses. And so we're trying to sort of lower the threshold for cost threshold for these businesses to get established. So that's, I'm number one, and that thought is embodied in the comprehensive plan and those regulations that we have there that I pointed out last month. So what we've done this month, we've taken the same memo that you had last month and updated it. We felt it would be useful to keep the material from last month in the memo. And that, that material that we provided to you last month is essentially, the heart of it is a table. If you can scroll down just, that provides, summarizes some of the characteristics of the codes of other jurisdictions, Battleground, Camas, Waschuggul, Clark County, Ridgefield, Vancouver, I think that's it. And looks at how they treat temporary uses, how they define temporary uses, what type of review process that temporary uses go through, the specific types of uses that they're allowing under a temporary use permit when they specify, not all jurisdictions specify, and what type of exemptions they allow for. In other words, what types of uses you can set up without having to go get a temporary use permit. A garage sale is a really common exemption. What criteria and standards apply to reviewing those temporary uses, which mainly has to deal with impacts of that temporary use on adjacent uses. And then the timeline for the timeline that the temporary use permit is good for. So that's kind of what we went over last month. And so what I wanted to do this month, the additional work that we did this month was to provide some recommendations to you about some of these different characteristics. And then next month, what we'll do is bring a red line draft of the code to you for consideration as just kind of a first discussion draft. So with that, let's go ahead and start, if you'll scroll down just to the recommendations section of this memo. There you go. Start by talking about the definition of a temporary use. And so we picked a definition from another jurisdiction that we feel is simple, straightforward, provides enough sort of flexibility, but enough specificity around it also. And so that definition is up there on the screen in front of you, and it's basically time limited. It doesn't say what the timeframe is, but it references the temporary use code. So depending on what timeframe we pick, then that's how that would work. And that there's an intent to discontinue the use after it expires, after the temporary use permit expires. And that those uses don't, they're not permanent. They don't involve the construction or alteration of a permanent use, which is basically another way of saying it's temporary. So that's a fairly straightforward definition. Then for exemptions, we didn't, we jumped over the category of permitted uses. And there's some pretty extensive exemptions in Clark County's code. I don't necessarily recommend that we adopt all of those. They have, I think they have some very specific things happening in rural areas of the county that are generating those exemptions, but there is otherwise in these other jurisdictions, Camas, Ridgefield, Vancouver and Waschuggul, there's a lot of commonality between the types of exemptions that they have. Garage sales, as I mentioned earlier, construction trailers for active grading or building sites. And then firework stands and holiday stands are kind of some of the most common exemptions that we have. And so our recommendation to you on that is to include those most common things that I just mentioned as exemptions. And as I said, we're not providing any recommendations on specific types of uses that should be allowed by a temporary use permit. So the code is silent on that now. And we're saying, you know, one of the things that we're recommending to you is that it remains silent. And that's in line with sort of the flexibility discussion that we had last month in terms of, hey, maybe we can't anticipate every single type of temporary use that might result. And maybe we don't have a reason to be super specific about it versus versus having some robust criteria to review any temporary use that's proposed. And, you know, therefore mitigate or require the applicants mitigate impacts if a temporary use is proposed that is, you know, noisy or smelly or what have you. Okay, so that's a good segue then into the approval criteria. And there's a lot of commonality there also across the jurisdictions, across most of the jurisdictions for the review criteria that are used. La Center's existing code contains very few review criteria. Essentially, the only review criteria that La Center has is that the temporary uses don't, aren't a detriment to public health, safety and welfare. And that's captured in most other jurisdictions' codes, but they also get a lot more specific, which I think it would be to the city's benefit to get a little bit more specific about about the review criteria. And so the things that we're recommending for you then are a criteria that talks about compatibility with the zoning district in which it's located, compatibility in the intensity and appearance with existing land, existing land uses. And then that structures associated with the temporary use have to be located completely within the lot that they're proposed on, and they have to comply with setbacks and vision clearance requirements of the base zone. That temporary uses have adequate parking, that they have adequate access to them, that the hours of operation are specified for the temporary use. You can't operate twenty-four hours a day. And that there's a provision that talks about impacts from noise, light, vibration, smoke or glare that they cannot adversely impact surrounding land uses. And then finally, one about hazardous material disposal complying with federal, state and local regulations. So those are the additional criteria that we're recommending that you consider that would help staff review these uses when they come in. And then if you have a temporary use that flagrantly violates one of these requirements, then it would be easy to require the applicant to adjust that temporary use so that you don't have, you know, it's not as noisy or smelly or it has more access points or the hours of operation are limited, so it's not driving the neighbors crazy. So those, you know, those things would be quite helpful, I think. And then the last item then is regarding timelines for temporary uses. And so the city's existing code, and then this again is just a quick reminder. City's existing code says that you can permit a temporary use under a type one process for sixty days, and then it can be extended for an additional sixty days. Under a type two process, you can permit a temporary use for more than sixty days. It doesn't specify how much. For more than sixty days, you can extend it by three months, but in no case can the original approval and the extensions exceed one year. And so what we're recommending to you then is to lengthen those timelines again in the interest of providing more flexibility to get these businesses established. Under a type one process, you could be approved for up to one year and get a six-month extension, up to six-month extension. Under a type two process, you could be approved for up to two years and receive a one-year extension, so a total of, so a total of eighteen months under type one or a total of three years under a type two. And then another quick reminder, question that came up last month was what is the difference between type one and type two? Type one is staff review. Type two is also staff review, but with public notice. Yeah. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is that the city's existing code requires removal of those temporary uses within forty-eight hours, which to me is incredibly quick, depending on the nature of the temporary use. And so we're suggesting that that be increased to thirty days. And if it's not removed in thirty days, then the city can abate the temporary use. So that's, that's it. Those are kind of the recommendations in a nutshell for you. As I said, we'll come back next month with a red line code, but we're definitely interested in hearing your comments on, on the set of recommendations here tonight. And then, you know, and if you think we missed anything, that would be good to know as well.
Chair, this is
Go ahead, Dennis. Commissioner Hill.
Just real quickly, Ethan, I appreciate your great job you're doing there. One of the things that, and I know that this this Tapany project that's been going on for a number of months, and you've been deeply involved in that. And that's really our first test of this temporary usage. One of the things, if I were to put on my previous council hat, one of the things that I would have been hit with or would be hit with, and hopefully by the citizens of La Center, is one of the things that I would have been hit with or would be hit with, and hopefully by the citizens of the center is, are we doing everything we can to encourage new business into our community? And what are we doing? And I would, as now as a, again, a member of the planning commission, I want to be faithful to the fact that I, it's what I've heard before is that or whatever we're doing as we move forward here, if there's some lessons learned on this Tappany project. First of all, I want to call it a pathway to permanent usage or a pathway to extension, which you have covered. And I think I agree with that. And maybe that's still not even good, a long enough period possibly in order to give a business enough time to really see whether or not they can make, pay the, you know, make a profit and and stay in business. So I'm not really sure. I guess every project, every business is has a different threshold of what they could what, you know, for them, for what would indicate whether or not they can make it or not make it. So as we move forward, again, I think that hopefully Ethan, you can bring to this the lessons learned from the Tappany project. And then again, somehow if someone were to look at our code, it would be clear that we, we, we want to provide a pathway to, if I use the word permanent usage and a pathway to an extension if they need it beyond what we currently have. And I think you've, you've actually provided some of that already in what you've shown us this evening. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hill. Let me just, I'm going to favor folks remotely. Commissioner Rock, any, any comments?
Yeah, I guess a couple. Ethan, in the past, we've always been discouraged to having the kinds of criteria that are compatible with. Are you confident that as a guy that's going to have to review and approve these, that those two compatible with criteria are something you can work with?
Can you provide some more input in terms of what you've heard about compatibility? Requirements, just that they're not specific enough and it's subject to.
Yeah, well, you're. Right, it's subject to too much interpretation. You know, your predecessor liked the idea of having specific criteria by which to make judgments on an application. And so if, I guess my question is, is do you think compatible with is a criteria that is, that can be executed appropriately by yourself or whoever else is going to be reviewing these?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really good question, Dennis. And I mean, perhaps we can tweak the language somewhat to talk about more specifically about the uses in each zoning district and and compatibility with those. I'll have to think on that just a little bit more. I think it is a little bit of a nebulous compatibility is a little bit of a nebulous idea. And so the, I guess the struggle is, is we, I think we all sort of understand in our minds what compatibility is, or we have a concept of what compatibility is. And we want that for a temporary use, but we can't anticipate every type of temporary use that there is. And so it's probably also one of those issues where if something was incompatible, you would know that right away too, even though you might not be able to say what exactly is compatible. So that probably is a very good way of answering your question. But we'll do some thinking on it. It could involve getting rid of the criteria and perhaps just relying on the performance standard, talking about impacts, because that takes care of some of the compatibility issues in terms of noise or vibration or light or what have you. Hours of operation is another compatibility issue as well as parking and access. So perhaps we can think on that a little bit more and maybe even get rid of the compatibility criteria, not only with the zoning district, but the existing land uses.
Okay, good. Let me ask what I wanted you to do was think about it because I want to put you in the position of the guy that's going to have to enact that. And what do you do with a statement that says compatible with? Because that is a lot in the eye of the beholder. And if we, we as the planning commission think there are some compatible compatibility issues we want to maintain, then we ought to be able to specify those. So I think that warrants a little more thinking. And I guess do we envision that there would be a temporary use that would be compatible with our residential zone? And the reason I ask that, I can envision one, and maybe we want to restrict temporary uses in residential zones to some degree.
Yeah. I mean, outside of the exemptions that we've named, you know, specifically garage sales, maybe not. Because I don't, you know, I don't, I'm struggling to think of another temporary use in a residential zone that you would have that we.
I mean, I wouldn't want somebody setting up a tent in their front, in setting up a tent in their front yard as a temporary use to sell knickknacks or hobby kinds of things. Now that might be an incompatible use, but this code would in essence allow that to happen.
Yeah. Somebody here in the planning commission meeting brought up street fairs. And so perhaps at some point in the future, there's a neighborhood or something that wants to have a street fair or homeowners association, would that be something that's acceptable?
Good question. And then my, my other question is hours of operation of temporary use should be specified. So that implies that you would accept any hours that are specified as opposed to having some restrictions on the hours. And again, I don't have a good suggestion for how to do that, but I can envision we want one a temporary use round the clock. And so I'm questioning whether there needs to be some restriction there. And it might be something as simple as compatible with existing uses or with the zone.
Yeah. Not withstanding your first comment.
Yeah. And then my, I guess my last comment is on the the expiration period. I, I believe my, I guess my gut feel is that it's a type one temporary use that would go, what, for a year? Is a year excessive? Just is, I think it's a bit excessive just because there isn't public comment allowed on it. I think something that goes that long, the citizens ought to have an opportunity to comment on it.
Okay.
And then lastly, I guess it's sort of a general question. What would? If I understand right, farm stands are exempt from any kind of permitting, right? So that's not a temporary use when, when munius wants to come up and set up their farm stand during the summer.
Yeah, that would fall under the city's vendor, which is in a totally different title. Chapter 560 or something like that. Somewhere in Title V, there's a street vendor code that regulates those types of uses.
Okay, so the, like this, the guy selling CBD down the bridge, that's a street vendor?
Yes.
So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to envision what a temporary use would be in our city.
Well, one current one that we have is the Tappaner, Tappany rockery out at the junction.
Okay.
I was also thinking, Commissioner Nuprock, another way, going back to the compatibility, we could apply some legalese to it. And you could do some interesting things like wholly compatible, you know, so, you know, not like partially compatible. So just strengthening the word a bit. But, but I do see the, I do see the concern. Any other?
Yeah, yeah, I got. I'm still struggling with what this might be. So would it, would a valid temporary use, if someone came in and said they wanted to use the old Buc-E's pizza parlor for something? And they weren't going to make any structural changes, would that, say they wanted to use that kitchen and sell some other kind of food? Would that be a valid temporary use?
I mean, that's within a permanent structure, so I would argue that that's a permanent use.
Okay, and so if somebody wanted to set up a food cart, that's a street vendor, right?
If it, yeah, if it, if it leaves every day.
What if it sets up for six months?
Yeah, that, that would be this. That would be the temporary use code.
Unless they leave.
I guess I need to go. Well, but you know, a lot of places have, you know, semi-permanent food carts. Okay, I'm done. I just, I struggle with how this, how widely this is going to be needed. I mean, I appreciate that we want to try to, to foster, you know, new businesses, give them a chance to, to get their business going. I just have a hard time visioning how that's going to happen. But, okay, that's all I had.
Commissioner Keeler, any thoughts?
The only one that's caused me any consternation is the second one, temporary use is compatible with intensity and appearance. I think defining on the part of city staff, what intensity looks like would be really challenging. And I'm just, I'm just curious like what your, what your thoughts would be on that? How would staff use that second bullet point to approve or disapprove a temporary use?
I mean, I guess one thought on that would be is if you because it talks about existing land uses. And so if the surrounding land uses are very low, low density, maybe it's single family homes, maybe it's large lot development. And then you have somebody that wants to propose something that covers the entirety of a lot with a temporary use. That might be an intensity issue or multiple temporary uses on the same lot. Appearance, I guess, is a little bit context specific as well. So, yeah, that's, that one, I think, is also somewhat nebulous, right? I guess we've, we, we touched on that a little bit earlier, but both of those compatibility criteria are somewhat nebulous.
Thank you. Just, it does feel that way to me, a bit nebulous.
Any other commissioners? So again, the spirit of what we're doing here, I think Ethan's working on red lines, which we haven't seen yet. So kind of in the spirit of what you'd like to see in those red lines, any other things that need tighter def, I think so far we've been just tightening definitions, which I think good to bring up to Ethan, any other items?
This, this is Dennis. If I could just share one, again, going on with Commissioner Keeler, taking again, the Tappany project and the use, and the words there again, Ethan, as far as temporary use and compatible intensity and appearance with existing land uses. And, you know, that, that really is, in that particular, there isn't such a thing. You couldn't even utilize that, those comments in in approving what we did, correct? Implying intensity and appearance with existing land uses. I mean, there's nothing up there that even remotely can like that.
Yeah, I think that that's probably true. You know, and so we, I, I think we should think very carefully about striking a balance between having some kind of compatibility criteria like this or just having it completely open. You know, it's kind of, kind of whatever. And so I think we need to figure out what that balance, balance is. Would, would sort of be my comment and thought on that.
Okay, finally, let me ask you this in regards. If we come up with this definitions and such, and that goes in gas and concrete. And then as part of your review process, you run across a situation which is not clear, but from your standpoint, is not, is not stay within the spirit of what we as a city want to see. Are we able to then say timeout? And actually stop something? Or are we actually, do we not have any, any recourse? If in fact, we don't have the right words put down on paper? And then we determine that, well, we, we missed that. We missed this. We, we talked about everything else, but somehow we missed that point. Do we have a recourse in the city that says timeout? That mean, we may need to get, we may not be able to approve what you want to do. Is that possible or are we stuck?
Well, so your question is if an applicant for a temporary use came in, submitted something and we said, oh, you know, this is just horrible. What are we going to do about this? Does the city have the ability to stop the review and ask them to adjust the proposal or, or go away? Effective.
Right.
Come back with something that's, yeah. I mean, yes, that's exactly what these criteria are intended to do is allow staff specifically the ability to require mitigations, for instance, not operating 24 hours a day, or maybe there's specific hours of operation such as, you know, a noisy use, maybe you wouldn't want that operating on a weekend because that could disturb nearby uses. Or perhaps somebody comes in with something that has a lot of fumes associated with it. So you require them to provide you a list of BMPs that they're going to implement to contain those fumes. So all of those types of things are fair points of discussion and requirements in the middle of the review process to get to a point where a temporary use is approvable or to a point where you determine this isn't approvable because it's just not, it can't be mitigated or reduced in scale or the fumes can't be capped or what have you to a point where that it's not going to be a major issue for, for the community or surrounding property owners. So, yeah, that, that's certainly something that can happen.
I, I don't think that, you know, we just spent a lot of time on this. I don't think we're going to be able to anticipate every situation. And that's the thing. So if it's, if there's a situation shows up and we can't find the words in our, in our code, we can still say timeout and, and potentially backpedal with the person and maybe not approve it, even though we don't, we didn't, was it specifically called out in our code?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I was just going to maybe wrap up this section with my own comment in that I definitely applaud the effort, Ethan. I love the idea of making it easy for folks to get in. I know as, as a city, we're trying to diversify sources of income and not rely on one or two types of businesses. So this is a step in the right direction, but at the same time, we've gated it so that you don't end up with some kind of nuisance, you know, right next door to you. So I applaud that. It'll be very interesting to see the, you know, the red lines. So thanks, Ethan. And then move on to new business 1.8A. Ethan, if you don't mind easing us into code changes tracking.
Yeah, so this was a request. Yeah. So this was a request from last month, I think from Commissioner Nutbrock, that we bring back this code tracking list that we've been keeping um, tabs on over the last couple of years, just in terms of items that need to be updated in the code. Um, at the front of this particular packet item is the planning commission's current work program um, for this year. Um, and so, um, you know, one of those items is title 18 um, that you have up here on your screen, which is kind of the second major row down there that talks about needed code updates. Um, I wonder if this is out of date. This looks out of date to me. So um, if in looking at this list of needed code updates or, or updates that we've been tracking, it may feed back into the work program here in terms of what we want to accomplish for the remainder of the year. Um, I will say that um, even without taking on any other code updates this year, we have quite a bit in store left for you, mainly the comprehensive plan, starting the comprehensive plan update. Um, and so that's going to take a lot of discussion in the latter part of the year. Um, but um, Commissioner Nutbrock did ask us to bring back this code tracking list. So you can go to that list. I'm not going to go through it, but it's, there's just a huge variety of items there, some of which we've accomplished already, others we haven't. It's color coded between yellow, which is a low priority, orange, which is medium priority and red, which is, which we, at least at the time deemed to be high priority. There's the parking code update there on the screen in front of you right now. So that's one of the things that we're taking on. Um, I think the archaeological code update was at one point deemed to be high priority. Um, so those are kind of the only introductory comments that I have on this. And I don't know if, if Commissioner Nutbrock has any other thoughts in terms of what he wanted to discuss regarding this, or if it's kind of a separate discussion that we need to have with um, a couple of planning commissioners um, about what you want to look at next, if that was kind of the point. But um, those are, those are some general thoughts in bringing this back to you.
Yeah, I guess I had two purposes. One is to make everyone aware that we have the list because we've got several new members since this list was put together. Uh, and to make sure that as, if any of us see anything that that should be on the list, we're supposed to be adding it to it. This is supposed to be a living list. Because in the past, we've always said, okay, we need to go work on that in the future. And then we always forget what that was. And so the objective here was to compile a list and keep adding to it as we go. And then to prioritize it. So we know that we're working on the next right thing. And then finally, my objective was, okay, is do we have time and is there something else on the list? That we ought to tick off as our next project. But I, what I hear you saying, Ethan, is we're probably got enough things on the list not to tackle something new right now.
We probably do. It might be worth a minute or so, maybe two minutes to go through some of the red items, because some of those things I think we've accomplished already. And I don't know that there's a huge number of them.
Well, Ethan, a couple of the red ones have listed as um, you know, their public hearing was in August, but there's no status on what, what has transpired, like the zoning maps. There's a status there that is way in the past.
Right. Yeah. The status of some of this stuff needs to be updated. I mean, but we did accomplish the zoning map updates.
Right.
Um, we accomplished the developments agreement code update, which is on the screen in front of you. Um, the height regulations, you made a recommendation on that last year. That's yet to go to city council. Um, keep going down. Parking, we're talking about that now. That's another reference to parking, probably just in a different section of the code. Um, master land, the master use table, that's something we've definitely um, said that we need to do in the past, but that one hasn't, we haven't tackled that one yet. Um, manufactured housing, um, we have not tackled that. Um, same with the next one, fair housing issue. Keep, keep going down. Um, subdivision code improvements, archaeology. And hmm, a little bit unclear what that last thing is. So there's some things, you know, there's some additional red highlighted items, some that we could undertake as well as just kind of updating the table in general for current status.
Just going to have a recommendation on this. This is a good kind of uh, roadmap for us to follow. What if we could get this updated and then, and I don't mean to punt everything into our group, but maybe at the top of the next working session, we, we determine, yes, we're working on the right things. And if, and if there's something we're missing, maybe we could table something we're working on now, although there is some momentum, bump something from this list up the list to, to refocus. And then we can go ahead and dive into, you know, the parking, which will be the, the main part of that working session.
Yeah.
Probably not a bad idea to like bring this up. I don't know, maybe quarterly and just make sure we're following the right trajectory.
Yep. I'm happy to update it and bring it back to you next month. Um, we can sort of have a priorities discussion.
Yeah. Another point is um, I, I don't see it now, but when I went through this earlier, there were several in there that were fairly easy to knock out. And you know, before Ethan, before you showed up, we as commissioners were doing a lot of the work you're doing now, doing research, writing draft code, bringing it back. You know, I, I'd be willing to take on a couple of these easy ones and do that legwork. So that, that's a discussion we can have when we get the list updated. And if there's some easy ones, uh, I think as commissioners, we could take those on.
I agree.
Excellent. No, that'd be, that'd be great. I think with the updated list, we could, you know, maybe pick some of those things off and Commissioner Keeler, any thoughts?
There are two that jump out to me right at the very bottom, thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
So that, those are two improvements and they're both uh, high priority as well. So what's everyone's thought then on, on maybe, uh, not to put everything on you, Ethan, although we put about ninety-nine percent on you. Maybe an updated list and then we could maybe pop this open, get it on the next agenda and then get a discussion going around, maybe we could drop something we're working on now to put, to put something in the red up that list a little bit.
As a new planning commissioner, this is really useful for me. So thank you for.
Yeah, I'd like to hang on to that document.
I mean, we can certainly have a discussion about priorities. And I think that the things that we're currently working on, one of them, parking code update is already listed as a high priority. The temporary use code is not even on here. That came up as a result of um, a permit review. Um, so we may want to sort of put that on the list. Um, and see where that falls. I know that amongst staff, that the temporary use permit code update is a pretty high priority for getting done.
And, and I'm glad you guys did that. And, and maybe for anything we've accomplished, we could do like a strikeout, leave the color coding, but just do a strikeout. So not distracted by it.
Have, having it updated, I think is critical uh, when we go through it. So if we've done, if there's some things that are, been completed, let's have it so noted, or maybe it's a different color entirely.
Okay.
Um, any other thoughts on this? Um, Ethan, I think we, we've got two docu-, you know, the code changes tracking and the attachment, a work plan table. So I think we've got both of these documents in front of us. So I was going to ask uh, commissioners if they had any other comments on one dot eight A? Or did we not open the second document yet? Sorry.
You're talking about the work program? Um, I would say don't look too hard at the work program. I think we may have included an out of date work program from last year on there instead of the current one, which is, you know, a mistake, but um, I'll, next month, I'll make sure I'll get the current work program on there.
So we'll maybe just float that under the next agenda then. Maybe it'll list it under uh, old business there. All right, uh, fellow commissioners, any, any final thoughts on one dot eight A? Our code changes tracking?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, just second, just um, Ethan, you mentioned the height uh, re- height code. That hasn't gone to the city council yet?
No, that's kind of languishing. Um, we need to get it in front of the city council.
I mean, it was, we had, we were finished with it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I remember buttoning that up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, moving on to reports, uh, Ethan, if you can take us into the um, development staff report, please?
Um, I think I'm going to have to go to the list. So I guess the things that are, that I'll highlight for you now are mainly at the bottom of the list. Um, there is a sign permit being processed for the Tappany Rockery up at the junction, which is the temporary use permit that we've talked about here tonight. Um, and then there at Timman Road and La Center Road, there's an expansion of an existing wireless facility um, by like just a hundred and seventy square feet to include a new concrete pad for a temp, uh, for a backup generator. Um, so I don't know if you're familiar with that, that wireless location, but it's, most people maybe don't know about it because it's behind trees and so forth on a residential lot. Yep, in that area on number thirty. Um, and then we had a pre-app for the Valley View subdivision. Um, I guess that was April fourteenth. Um, no, sorry, April twenty-seventh. Um, and that was for, trying to remember how many lots that was. Was that thirty-five lots? Do you remember? Thirty-five lots. Um, and that's item thirty-one on the map. That, that would be an LDR subdivision. Um, and then I've talked about the CPU flow station before at Timman and La Center Road also. Um, and then the Riverside, Riverside Estates Phase One is filing a post decision review to revise some of the notes on their final plat, on their recorded plat document. Um, and then finally Wildcat Ridge is a new pre-application request that we received recently, which is I think um, number thirty-five on the list there, kind of adjacent to the the high school. Um, and that is, well, still, the applicant is still trying to work out exactly what that would be, but it would be either single family detached residential or attached residential. If it's attached residential, they would have to go through a zone change um, in order to make that happen. Um, so that's most of the new stuff. Um, uh, I guess the final thing I'll mention is Lockwood Meadows subdivision has a public hearing next Monday night. Um, and that's item number one on the map. Um, so the neighbors in that area were noticed um, for that project. Um, so that here, excuse me, that hearing will be in front of the city's hearings examiner next Monday night. Any questions?
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, Ethan, what, what kind of variance is this, or the schools are seeking for their signs?
Um, it, so they're proposing, or at least their last proposal, I don't know if they've Okay, so that's completely done. What they initially proposed didn't meet code, so they've withdrawn it and they're working on a revised proposal, but they were proposing signs, digital video display signs in combination with sort of a standard, more standard sign li- light board that um, was over the sign code size limits. So we told them that and they withdrew their proposal.
We had a, we had a comment.
So are they, the, the comment says they're seeking a variances, are they trying to very, get a variance on the size?
I think that's out of date. That list is now out of date, Dennis. So um, they've withdrawn that.
We have a comment.
Then my other question was on the, the Tappany. When I saw that about signs, since I was the author of the signs, I'm always interested in those things. That, that it says that the, it implies that they wanted to do a two-sided freestanding sign. The city said no because it would be permanent. That kind of surprised me. Do you know the background there?
Yeah, they were proposing, I mean, some of the same issues, actually. They were proposing a sign um, that they were calling a canted sign that they were going to place at the top. Kind, kind of like a sideways A-frame sign, so to speak, at the top of one of the rockery walls out there. And it was too big and they were proposing a second one that was too close to that first sign. Um, so we've spoken to them about that issue and I think they just today submitted a revised proposal, which I haven't looked at yet. But um, so I think those were the two main issues um, on, on that particular sign.
Okay, thank you.
Going to go to our guest.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick question. It's more about learning the whole process, but you mentioned that the public hearing at, for the Lockwood Meadows things. And so what does that mean kind of in the overall process and what comes to the planning commission, what goes to the things or, or are things already on motion or, I mean, just juris on the?
Yeah. Um, so that particular development is a subdivision, which means it's a type three permit, which means that it goes before the city's hearings examiner and the hearings examiner has the final approval authority on it. So that won't come to the city's hearings examiner or the city council. In that case, it just goes from staff to the hearings examiner. The hearings examiner makes a recommendation. Uh, sorry, the hang examiner makes a decision based upon the staff recommendation.
And the hearing examiner is whom or is that a group or is that?
It's, the hearing examiner is one person. And he is an attorney that's trained in land use issues. Um, and the city's hearing examiner is somebody by the name of Joe Turner. And he, I think he's shared with Ridgefield and some other jurisdictions in the area. So this is kind of what he does. Um, and uh, so yeah, he's a, he's a trained land use attorney. So he kind of acts as a, a, a judge, I guess, if you will. Um, to decide quasi judicial land use matters.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
You were stuck, right? Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry.
I was trying to remember.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
Good, good comment. Any other commissioner comments on this particular, on the um, community development staff report? on the community development staff report?
No. Chairman Akashari, this is Dennis. I need to leave.
Understood. Well, the, the, the good news is I told everyone that we were barely going to eke through quorum, and then we had a great surprise of having you join us. So by, by all means, definitely, and I know you're probably in a different time zone also. So I bid you farewell and thanks for coming, although you're traveling.
Greetings, everyone. Catch you later next time. Signing off.
Take care. Well, well, thanks for the staff report, Ethan. I'm going to go ahead and roll into 1.10, which is planning commissioner and alternate comment. I'm going to start with Commissioner Nutbrock, because I'm favoring folks that are remote today.
No, I've said enough. Thank you.
Very tough on yourself. Commissioner Keeler, any thoughts?
Not at this time, no.
All right, well, I am, I've spoken a lot too, so I won't have, I'm not going to throw out any comments, other than what I've already put out there, that folks who are remote, you know, please do not feel that you're letting anyone down. You know, the city has made this a hybrid meeting, and you're here, and I appreciate that, and the work that everyone puts in. So moving on to 1.11, I don't think we need to pick the time and place, because we can spend a lot of time on calendars. But I'm going to, Commissioner Nutbrock, can I assume that you're definitely one of those that would be in the, the work session to discuss parking?
Absolutely.
All right. I guess we don't have like a big swath of folks. I know I did a work session when I first got here. It was a good way to learn. Commissioner Keeler, would you want to maybe join on that?
Yes.
So what I'll do then is, because I don't want to email you both at the same time. Ethan, are you able to maybe coordinate or just calendars? I would offer to do it, but I guess every email would turn into a quorum there, so.
We can, yeah, we can work it out.
Yeah, okay, thank you, guys. I wasn't trying to shirk my, my duties and on that. So thank, thank you both for taking that up. I think it'll be really, I, I remember it was like a crash course learning stuff.
Sounds good.
Yes, learn, I learned a lot. Let's leave it there. And then as far as regular meeting attendance, you know, being that it's a month out, I know no one can set their schedule, but Jess, you and I were talking about the fact that by bylaw or by law, we need only to meet seven or eight times a year.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
I am pretty sure it's nine times a year.
And, and I, and I think we skipped one. I think we've skipped one. No, this year we've skipped none. And so with vacations in mind, I would entertain any, any thoughts on maybe the month to skip? I mean, it's kind of vacation season.
I mean, usually, if you want to skip, it's one during the summer, and then maybe one, like, say, December or November, or something like that during the holidays, when people are going to be, a lot of people are going to be gone anyways. Those are, those seem to be favorite times of the year.
December.
The July meeting, I'm going to be in Hawaii. We'll have no inclination to dial in, so I'll be gone in July.
I'm hearing July. I like July and December. I mean, and we're not like taking a formal vote or anything, just kind of soliciting opinions. But that, that sounds like, luckily, we have a little bit of time to schedule that. So maybe we can pick those in a, in a, in the next meeting, so. Okay, with that, as we finish the agenda, if there is no objection, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:07. Going once, going twice, hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
See everybody there.
Thank you, Commissioner Nutbrock. And again, we have to redo this whole thing, because I forgot to call the meeting. I'll get used to that. It's just too much power for, for me. My, my wife would be wholly upset.
Thank you guys for attending, by the way. Appreciate it. I know it's like, not the, maybe the most riveting of meetings, but I think it's really, it's really great that you guys showed up. I mean, like, a lot of stuff happens here, and a lot of stuff happens outside.
That's kind of what I was trying to say.
And like, although.
I was heading there and then I couldn't.
Like, there's no way to officially.
Withrew. Well.
Yeah, yeah, like, there's, there's like no way to really, like, like, I can't do anything officially in there. As a matter of fact, and certain sleep sites have been banned. And so I couldn't go in. And then them showing up here would be a great idea. Anyway, so it's great that you showed up, and again, not riveting, but, you know, if there was something contentious, you would definitely be like in the front line, figure out a way to tie that.